...compliance with open meetings, law notification and adoption of agenda. Please join me in the pledge to the flag. We'll start with comments from the audience regarding agenda items. I also want to point out this is a committee of the whole meeting, so if you have comments during the meeting, you can, we can engage at that time as well. So would anyone care to address the board on an agenda item? We ask that you state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to five minutes.
Hi, I'm Amy Ellison. I work at Hales Corners Elementary and I'm also a parent of an eighth grader here in the district. And I'm really here as a parent tonight. My daughter is in eighth grade and I'm looking at the open enrollment suggestions for next school year. And I just really have appreciated how this board has been asking those tough questions, asking for more information before making decisions. And I would encourage you to all do that again with looking at open enrollment, especially the ninth grade numbers. Her class is one that some of you may have remembered, some of us came when they were in first grade and going into first grade, leaving kindergarten, because they were very large in the number of kids in a classroom, 27, 25 in kindergarten, 27 in first grade. But they were small in terms of there's only three sections at Hales Corners. But we weren't going to open up any other seats. That wasn't a good idea. There was a lot of reasons explained about how open enrollment seats are sometimes something not to do. And so now, once she, her group got to the middle school, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and now projecting for ninth grade, every year, we've been opening up a lot of new open enrollment seats. So I just really, my concern is, is that, you know, not that I'm not open to new people coming in, I am, I think that's useful for the district, but I just worry that if these ages, they're not coming with that view of themselves of what it means to be a learner in Whitno. They're not coming with all the great teaching from our elementary schools. They're not coming viewing themselves as this is how I behave. These are our behavior rules and codes of conduct here in Whitno. So I just hope that what we're gaining by opening up these seats again for this group is going to outweigh any potential negatives to them as a community. The community is learners, so. I don't really know that it's a bad thing. I'm just here to say, you know, maybe some discussion about where the numbers are coming from, why 12 this year? It's been larger numbers than the past years. Where, you know, where's that coming from and what's the gain compared to what's the loss? So. And I realize I didn't tell you my address, so I'll just do that now. 121-21 West Godsell Avenue here in Hales Corners. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Mike?
Hi, Mike Seaver, sixth grade teacher at the middle school and WAFT president. And I just want to say there are actually several people in the audience tonight.
I'll get your address right away, so.
Oh, 5025 South 116th, right across the street. So, um.
No, we need your, I'm sorry. Your personal address is.
Home address.
Home address.
I'll give, I'll give it to you afterwards. But I just want to say real quick that we have several people, several teachers in the audience tonight that are real interested in hearing the presentation tonight on item 7F under new business. And so just, and not knowing that not everybody is able to, you know, stay for the entire meeting tonight, and I know it's further down on the agenda, but is there any consideration that it can be moved up the agenda so that we can see the presentation? And, you know, if anybody's got any questions for us, you know, we would greatly appreciate that courtesy.
Thank you. Have you adopted the agenda? Does anyone care if we move that up? No? Everyone's okay with that? So we'll just move F up to A? We'll just take that up first, when we get down to anything.
Do we have a motion?
I don't think so. We don't vote on the agenda, so I think we're okay. Okay, next up, anyone else like to address the board this evening? Seeing none, then we'll move to consent agenda. Item A, acceptance of school forest grant. Would anyone like to pull this out? Seeing none, then we will vote on the consent agenda. A, acceptance of school forest grant.
Motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Seeing none, move to reports, committee reports. Why don't we start with Quinn? You have a.
Yes, well, as you can see, uh, well, I guess it would be item, items B, C, D, E, and F. We've been busy, so there'd be a few first-time policies, mostly revisions. It wasn't, it wasn't any new, mostly revisions, I believe. And our next meeting is.
January 27?
January 27 at 3:30, okay? And I just, the one thing I do want to speak to, because it's not on here, is the transgender policy. And it was, we discussed it. Mr. Joyce told us, and with Lori and Lynn being there as well, the policies that we have currently in place do address this. Now, this is a situation, this is a, I don't want to say a situation, but it's evolving. It's, it's changing. There might be legislation coming down, but right now, it's been advised to us to leave it where it is. We have, we have policies in place to cover us, and as things, and if things do change in the government legislatively, we will, we'll address it then. So, other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you. Finance and facility, nothing?
No, we're meeting next Monday, but.
Okay. No?
We did not meet.
All right, then we would move to advisory committee. We have our court chairs here. Thank you again for all your extra work helping us.
Okay, I'm Jeannie Rupel, for those that don't know me.
And Dar, thrown home as the vice chair.
We have not met since our last update. We met, I think, the week before, and we meet tomorrow again. So, but there are a few things that are going on, so I'll fill you in on them. Tomorrow at our, our meeting, we will be having Tony Brzezowski there to talk about the curriculum trends and facility needs, for those, we're going to have a discussion, giving us some direction. As a group, on Wednesday, we'll be touring Oak Creek Deerfield Elementary School. If anyone did want to join us, it's at 6:30 PM when we're going over there, just let me know. And I'd like to let the principal know about how many people are coming, so. Next week, Monday, we will tour Lake Mills Elementary School. That's at 3:30 PM, it's earlier in the day. And, and then also next week, we're hoping to send a couple of members to the convention, the school board convention downtown, to look at some of the facilities exhibits and that there. And then, in two more weeks, because, because we've now changed to meeting twice a month, the second and the fourth Tuesdays, we will, next week, we will have, I mean, next, two weeks from now, we will have a presentation from Epstein U and with some current projects that they have in the works, different schools that are having modifications or some new schools, and just some of the ideas that they have going on in those projects. So, that's all pretty much going on in this next month, and anyways, welcome to join us if they so wish.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next up, we have superintendent's report.
Okay, I'd like to start out by publicly thanking our snow removal crew. As everyone knows, we were blessed with that heavy wet snowstorm over the holiday break, and our crews started the snow removal process at 4:00 AM and continued well into the evening to have things ready for school activities. I mean, the one break they had is when we bought pizza and all sat down and ate lunch. So it was very impressive. Thanks to Greenfields for also giving us a hand, the Department of Public Works there. And they did a great job, and their efforts are very much appreciated. Congratulations, this is something I would imagine a lot of us followed, but congratulations to Whitno High School alumni Joel Stavi on earning the most valuable player award at the 2015 Holiday Bowl. In addition to earning his degree in engineering several weeks ago, the outstanding performance in the football game also made him the winningest quarterback in UW-Madison history, and we'll be recognizing him sometime in March with an all-school assembly kind of thing. We have another example of our forward-thinking team planning when Greenfield School District hosts our annual legislative breakfast later on this week, I believe. I contacted Senator Lazzard several weeks ago, who recommended several dates, and then I handed the information off to Greenfield Superintendent Lisa Elliott, who sent out additional invitations to board members and representatives. So we'll have a group of four or five legislators and a number of board members and administrators. So it's always an enjoyable event as we try to work together as a team to serve the students in our communities by working with our legislators. Last but not least, we had a very smooth transition in students returning to school after the extended Christmas and New Year holiday break. We still have a ton of events to look forward to over the next several months, and I hope everyone gets the opportunity to see our kids in action, whether it's a sporting event, musical, or a student concert. And that's it.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda, we have discuss and take possible action on the approval of the ten-year capital improvement plan. We have looked at this in pretty great detail already, but we wanted to bring it back, give everybody a chance to think about it, give the public a chance to give us their input. Anyone have any questions or comments about improving the plan? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the capital improvement plan.
Motion.
As presented, it's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. And next up, we want to discuss and take possible action on the establishment of Fund 46. This will enable the board and the district to start saving money for long-term capital projects. So, does anyone have any questions? Again, we've looked at this in the past, but any questions or comments on the Fund 46? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the Fund 46, the establishment of Fund 46.
Motion. Well, actually, one quick, did we decide on a dollar amount?
$100.
Just $100?
I thought a dollar sounded pretty cheap, so I figured a hundred.
$100 to get it started?
The $100 is fine, yeah.
You can spend it right there.
That's great.
Budget in the future, that would be good. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. All right, and now, next up, we have F, discuss open enrollment, space availability and class size parameters.
All right.
Are you presenting this?
I will, because it was handed off to me, because our HR person is not available this evening. But we've worked on it over the past couple of weeks, had a meeting with some of the principals and you, and Mike as well, a week or so ago. And just mostly for the public, you guys already have it in front of you, if you can scroll down to it, it's way near the bottom of the packets.
There you go, I got it.
Each year, we're required to approve the number of open enrollment seats available for the next year, and that's in state statute. We don't have any choice. We've, following the class size parameters that have been used in the recent past, we actually lowered those class size parameters for this coming school year. Administration analyzed the preliminary 16, 17 projections, including current students who are under, currently attending under open enrollment, Chapter 220 and tuition waivers. Because of tuition waivers, the board has allowed those to move into open enrollment seats in the past. Methods for determining open enrollment seats availability are determined according to board, with board policy. The district will determine the number of sections necessary in each grade and establish classroom capacity based upon the minimum target class size. The total number of open enrollment seats in each available grade, or available in each grade, are established using the recommended DPI formula. So it's a blend of local policy and DPI formula. It's very prescriptive, because if we don't follow their formula, any parent can grieve the finding or appeal the finding if we decline them. And up until two years ago, when we straightened it out and really stuck to the formula, we were losing every single appeal. So it's important that you follow this strictly. And their basic formula is class size times the number of sections equal capacity. Capacity minus projected enrollment equal new open enrollment seats. So if we're projecting 25, seven sections of fifth grade, seems to be trendy, if we are projecting seven sections of fifth grade, and we project an enrollment of 25, we would accept nobody. If we set 23 as the target, and we had class sizes of 22, we could accept open enrollment up to that 23 amount. The district will guarantee space for the current open enrollment students. If there were more applications than openings, which happens every single year, they go onto a waiting list, and the rules and process for selection come to the board at the January 25th. There are currently 25 students attending on tuition waivers, and 32 220 students included in the 16, 17 projections. And you may remember the 220 is aging out, so we will not be adding any more 220 because the program is grandfathering out according to state law. Let's see. Administration is proposing to use the following classroom targets for determining open enrollment availability. In the past, we had used 25, we want to reduce that to 23 for, as the target for elementary grades two through five. That means we won't, we don't fill it up to 25. You can leave that as an option when you get later on at the summer, you know, and then you can make that decision if you'd like. But for the required number of seats, we're going to keep it at 23. That way, there's less chances of getting bumped when you have an extra 15, 20 kids arrive. We also lowered it for first grade. First grade had also been at 23, we're lowering that to 20 as the target, and 18 for kindergarten. So again, those are seven sections. Kindergarten capacity is set at a total of 127, I'm sorry, yeah, 126, which is seven sections times 18 students per section. Grade one capacity is a total of 140, which is seven times 20, and then two through five are set at 161. Based on current enrollment projected, 16, 17 school year enrollment is shown below. Then, there's a sheet like this that's in the public section of the board packet as well. And when you use those numbers and you go down, you'll see grade one, actually kindergarten is the only area where they're projecting open enrollment seats of three, and then they're projecting one in grade one at the 20 per section. So they must have 139, yep, 139 projected. For the middle school, we also substantially reduced that. We had seven sections of 27, and we reduced it to seven sections of 25, which means there's a grand total of one new, new open enrollment seat at sixth grade. Because they're at, currently at 176, so that would bring them up to the 177 mark. 16, 17 is very much the class you were talking about. Grade nine, we're recommending 12. We had set the capacity at 204, there's 192 coming into grade nine. One of the questions that was asked was specifically yours, was what is, what's the benefits of open enrollment, other than the financial, which is actually pretty substantial? But it, when the board really focused in on it five, six years ago, it's to flatten out the class sizes, so you don't have the big peaks and valleys, because you want to maintain the programs that you have at the high school. If you one year don't have enough, you have to lay off a teacher. It's a very painful process, you know, and, and then you also run the risk of not being able to find that person again when the enrollment goes back up. The, last question, oh, as you, also, as you may recall, seven years ago, we had a very substantial reduction in force to meet the budget. I think it was 400 some thousand dollars, something like that, if you recall better than me. But it was, we lost a lot of people and had to lay, lay a lot of people off. And we wanted to avoid that for the future if at all possible. So one of the things, there's, when you want to balance your budget, you can reduce expenditures, and in a school district, 80% approximately of your expenditures are in salaries and benefits, or you can increase revenues. In the open enrollment program, using the, this is the same one I presented to the, the committee, the committee that's exploring the options, and it's also the one I shared with the board right after that. But using the 422 non-resident open enrollment students listed above, at a current rate of $6,785, we bring in an additional 2, $2,863,270 through the open enrollment program, which is about 10% of the total budget. So, the, you don't want to run into situations like you had this year, where you had too many, we actually have very few open enrollment kids at, at this, our current first grade classroom level, but we had a bunch of people move in that pushed some of those first grade class sizes up to 27. And we want to avoid that, so that's why we dropped the 23 down to 20. So, and if you figure that over seven sections, that's three kids times seven sections is 21 kids that we're reducing. It doesn't mean, it doesn't preclude the board from, when you get to June, if you, you feel there's enough open space in some of the classrooms to add people in, you know, whether it's to balance your budget or whatever it is. But it doesn't allow you, I mean, you have the control so that you don't go over if you reduce it further now. Now, the decision also, this is just the presentation part of the open enrollment, the board will, if they're happy with all the information they have, they can make a decision in two weeks on whether that's what we send to the state or not. So, now, back to you.
Oh, questions?
For sixth grade, you said we're trying to be at 175. Why are we adding one to make it 177?
I just noticed the error in that calculation. That should actually be zero.
Yeah.
I did just notice that you did have an error in our calculation, so that sixth grade should be at zero.
I was asking that too. I looked at it, it was going, 177 doesn't divide right.
All right, so that will be zero. We'll get that updated report before the next board meeting. Okay, Quinn?
Well, my question is to the teachers, that you're all here, what is, what, talk to me. Not all at once.
What do you want to know?
Well, what, you mean, obviously, this is important to you, so what is important to you?
Well, just to make sure that we, we do have manageable class sizes. One question that I had when I was looking through this report, and I know Kevin kind of clarified that one number already, like, for example, I'm going to use the middle school. It said one new open enrollment seat in grade six, and then when I look on the next page, where it talks about the special ed open enrollment, again, I'll use the middle school as an example, and it says total of five spots. Can someone clarify?
I can.
Maybe re-clarify that?
Sure. We, you have to identify what your, and maybe if I, is Dennis here yet? No. You have to identify how much space you have up to your, your caseload. So they, the DPI allows you to set your caseload using a weighted index. So that's why it says DPI index. And then, the teachers turn in their students, following that weighted index, and then they come up with a number. So, if that's, at the middle school, it says you could have five additional special ed kids. If we, if that number at the middle school had been 15, that means five of them could have been special ed kids. The sixth one would not be allowed because we'd have maxed out the, the weighted index. So it's, remember one of your concerns when we were talking with Lynn, was that you get, might end up with too many special needs students in an open enrollment, and then you just, you mess up the balance. This is a way of preventing that. So if you have the number zero down, which it looks like that's what we're going to have now, of those five open seats, all five go on, would stay open. They, they fit underneath that umbrella.
Well, Quinn, just to go back to answer your question, I mean, there's, there's several of us that are interested in the class size topic because of our numbers that we have this year. So like, for example, in the sixth grade, we have several sections of sixth grade academic classes that have 31, 32 students in the class. We even have a language arts class that have 33.
Isn't it balanced because there's other classes that have, like, 17?
Well, it all depends on what's offered.
Right. And the load of what they're taking.
Right.
But so, there are class sizes that are less than 20, potentially, lower? Yeah? So it ultimately balances out, but it's just based on the schedule of what's available?
When we switched, like, two years ago, that imbalance happened.
But it can't be that way in the elementary schools.
You're right.
Because those sections are, I don't want to say even, but you, you don't have that give and take. If you have a large grade in an elementary school, you're divided by the number of teachers, and that's, that's it, if I'm remembering correctly. So that, and then you take whomever moves into the district. So if you already have, if we've said the capacity per classroom is 20, and 20 families move in, that's, you know, potentially another three per grade level that you're trying to absorb, and then you're at 23, and that's getting pretty full in elementary to do what is needed to be done. And I'm also a little concerned about the plex rooms then. If we've got, if we've got grades that are, are having a plex room, and you have someone move into the district mid-year, how, how do you integrate them and, and choose if we open a lot of open enrollment seats in a given grade, I guess?
We're not looking at a lot of open enrollment seats in the elementary.
Well, that, that's true.
Three in kindergarten and one in first grade.
No, and you're right, Nancy, you are. But it's still, still part of the discussion as a whole philosophy of what to do with open enrollment, too.
But the thing is, when those seats are filled, and then throughout the year, families move into the district who are resident, we've already had, just in our fifth grade alone at Hales Corners Elementary, you know, granted, you might have some move away, but you have some move in, and so, you know, we're at 25, 26 in our classrooms, and just had a new student come in. You know, it doesn't matter what month it is, they, they move.
So you, so it makes sense for the administration to cut back now, like they've done for this year, so that if that happens, we're not.
I can say, sixth grade, we've had the same thing happen this year, where I can think of at least five new students that we've had this year come in. We had some in September, we had, you know, one right before Christmas, we had one start right, you know, right after winter break. And, you know, it makes it a challenge if they have, you know, certain classes that they need to take that, you know, I'll have the guidance counselor come to me and say, you know, "Sorry, I did the best I could, but I have, the options are limited," and then you already get another one in a class of 31, you know, and then that also affects your physical space in the room, too. You all know that middle schoolers, we're, you know, we're not the smallest of people either, so when you cram 32 desks in a classroom, plus if you have, you know, not only the teacher, but, you know, if you have other adults in the classroom, you know, for special ed support and whatnot, that gets tight in there.
So, could I turn that into a question? Were you finished yet, though? I know all of you might still have more questions.
No, it's fine, go ahead.
I'm still, and I'm still grappling with, with the high school number. I mean, I, I understand a philosophy in a high school to say that if you, if you have a larger class coming in as a freshman, then you might be able to offer more classes because more kids might be wanting an elective, just because you've got a bigger pool of candidates, as it were. I under, I understand that, but everybody's got to take English, everybody's got to take math, so at some point, their class sizes do get affected.
Okay.
So, what happens at the high school?
So that was my question. You just caught what I was going to ask. So if these numbers get too big, what do we do about that? What does the admin, how do you?
Well, if you, if you take them out of one, at the high school, it's, it actually balances easier, because if you take them out of one class, that means that teacher is available to teach another class. You know what I mean? Because we have limits, and I forgot what the limit is. Jackie?
We're not a set, we're not taking, when you, we're not preset the schedule. We're making our master schedule based on a request from students. So when we get all the requests in February, we will take that and divide it out and try to make class sizes. And we typically do have a lower class size in ninth and 10th grade, then we roll in 11th and 12th grade, you know, gives the students an opportunity to mature. Sometimes classes don't end up perfectly balanced, but something that we're, you know, always working on. It's not as difficult at, at a high school.
Okay. Other questions? I think that was. I think that was one of my concerns, is when the numbers do get too big, what do, what do we do about that?
Well, I can, I can give you an example, just with the first grade at Edgerton. They have three sections of first grade that are at 27. Of those 27 kids, only one was open enrollment. So, when Chris pointed out the, the problem, we looked at our different options, talked with some of the first grade teachers that are at Edgerton, because they're the ones that are involved with the, the process. And we're running a substitute teacher for the remainder of the school year at first grade to pick up, so you can reduce the reading and math instruction for the kids, so you can break them up a little bit different, so that they still have smaller class sizes for the core subjects. So, that, that's the example of what you do when it gets over.
Okay, when it gets too over, or, or, like you said, even if it's not related to open enrollment, it would be all students. We should always be bal, you know, taking care of the needs in your classrooms regardless. So, so what we have to do, John's got some questions first. John?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to say, you know, I understand we lowered the, the target class size some in the elementary schools, but with this, with these calculations, but it seems to me that if, if there is realized growth throughout, you know, from K through grade five, and be able to insulate ourselves from having to take open enrollments based on the DPI's calculations by setting our, our targeted section size lower than that, expecting it to go above that, but to the level that we're willing to accept through the growth, and, and not end up having to, and not end up setting the level that we're willing to accept, and then having a balloon above that from people coming in. Does that make sense?
So, you're saying move the target lower?
What are you saying? Move the, lower, or the target's okay where it's at?
I'm, no, what I'm saying is, if we think 23 is a decent number, and if we have 20 in a section, and you're saying DPI then is going to make us add 21 students, just doing that simple math there, to, to bring it up, to add three more per section for seven sections, then maybe if we typically see a growth of, of 14 students in a, you know, throughout, you know, two through five, then, you know, by the, from the time they start grade two to the time they get through grade five, then maybe we need to set the, the, the supposed desired section size down to 21 so that we don't have to take these open enrollment students through those DPI calculations, and our anticipated growth will end up coming up to this level that we're, we're kind of desired.
Did you get that?
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Well, administration can take this back and, and look at it again.
I can't hear any.
I know you're bleeping.
I'm sorry.
You're bleeping in and out.
You were cut off for a minute there.
I don't know why.
They don't make us take a certain number of open enrollment students.
When we first, yes, when we first.
Yes, they do.
Started this about, well, five, six years ago, and we didn't have the formula set, and we put, we said zero. And we were having classes of, we had some grade levels with 25, some grade levels with 22, and someone applied for it. They don't make us, but if someone appeals it, they automatically get it.
Okay.
So, and that gives us no control.
That's what I'm referring to.
So, by doing some, something similar to what John talked about, we've lowered it now so that, at the first grade especially, we dropped it, our number had been 25 for first grade, or 23. It had been 23, we dropped it to 21. But we would take additional kids up to 23, and when we did that, all of a sudden, we had, and very unpredictable. I mean, it's, it was resident students. But with apartments, sometimes you can't predict that. So, it, this gives us the, the most flexibility while still, it's an experiment. They might come back and say, well, gee, you have 26 kids in that fifth grade, and you only have 24 in that sixth grade, so we're going to appeal it. But we're hanging our hat on the fact that we're following DPI's formula, and that we're following our, our policies, which also say how we pick the kids. So.
Do we have any, do we have any statistics that show, on average, how much we can anticipate our average section growth from, say, grade two through grade, to by the time that's, those sections get to grade five?
We have, go ahead.
I'm sorry. We, we tried in the past, John, but it's too unpredictable. Like I said, you might, you'll get a balloon at first grade, and then you'll have a real low second grade resident population, very much like you were talking about. And sometimes it's a blessing, or they reduce a section, and then it's not a blessing because you end up with 27 kids in a class. So, it's a, it's a balancing act, and it is important to, absolutely. The, these ladies and gentlemen are hand in nail on the head, the, the smaller the class size, the more individual attention you give those students. So, it is important, and you got to weigh that with your, keeping your AP sections and your other sections, and all the course offerings you have, and maintaining your, your staff as well. So, it's a balance.
Could, could.
I just think it's easier to accept smaller than anticipated sections than it is for large, than, than it is to accept larger than anticipated sections.
Okay.
If that makes any sense.
Stephanie?
So, obviously, how we've been doing it, they're bulging at the seams at fifth grade, it sounds like. So, I realize lowering these section numbers is, is a start, but have we lowered them enough?
Okay, Stephanie's going to talk now. Hang on, John.
I would, I would ask that when you send us the next round, when we're actually voting on this, if you could include the financials in there as well. I also know that the funding formula for open enrollment has changed.
Oh, sure.
So, if we could have numbers accompanying this and explain the changes in, in the funding for open enrollment, that would be helpful, too.
I would also like to see some trends come forward, like what has happened over the last, at least three years in terms of enrollment.
Resident or resident enrollment? Strictly resident?
You've got, yeah, well, resident and open enrollment. How have those two lines changed over the years?
Sure.
And I know they've got that, so that would be helpful, too. Okay, any other questions?
Resident enrollment just.
Resident and open enrollment.
Resident enrollment is going to be the biggest piece there, how the trends of that have changed.
Okay, alright. Any other questions?
Yeah, well, so, teachers, what do you think about the levels that are presented to us?
I think it's a step in the right direction, just to kind of hold the numbers down a little bit.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, I can tell you, like, you know, in sixth grade this year, we're, we're approaching 200 students. I mean, we're, we're pretty much just about there. And when, when you have a large class, especially when it's over 30 students, you know, we, we are, we're do, we're trying very hard to implement all of the new initiatives and, you know, other styles that are presented to us in services and whatnot. But, you know, we do our very best to try to reach everybody, but it is difficult at times. And, and when you have more than one section like that a day, it puts a straightener.
Okay, any other comments?
And I was just going to say, I'm a district library media specialist, so I get all the enrollment of kids coming in and out. And I can say that there have been a lot more coming in throughout the school year, throughout the district, than have been leading, and just, that has been more than in the past few years. You know, so that is just something to keep in mind with the numbers. You just, this might just be, you know, abnormal, but, I mean, there have been a lot of new kids coming in during the year.
What do you mean by a lot?
Well, I think this, just for the month of January, I think we, I think there was eight to 10.
Oh.
Is that true? Do you know?
The resident kids.
I mean, and we kept getting all these new enrollments, and you're like, this person's coming, this person isn't. I mean, we had to have actually just a summary of who was coming where, because there had been a lot of, I mean, that could just be this year, though, I'm not saying, you know, but I know that they're struggling with finding some of the equipment for the one-to-one, you know, because we're getting really tired on some of that stuff, too.
Okay. So, in general, it sounds like this, we'll come back. We, we heard your concerns. Hold on, John, let me finish. We heard your concerns about class sizes, and they've lowered the number for this year. But again, the administrative team can take this back based on what they heard tonight and talk about it again.
Oh, sure, on Thursday.
On Thursday, you can talk about it again, and then it'll come back to the board on the 25th. John, you had some, something else, John?
Yeah. One thing we didn't get to, brought up, was the, the grade nine proposal for next year, 12 seats. That's the same one as grade eight this year, that we added 29 seats to for this year. So, over the past two, over this year and next year, that'll be a total of 41 seats, if my public math isn't failing me. And, and I just, I just wonder, again, just like Ms. Ellison did, is, is that the, is that the best way to go about this? To try to bring that dip in, in enrollment for that year group up? Or is it maybe better for the kids that we have to let that ride and, and smooth things out the way we have been in the earlier grades? So, I think we need to discuss that, because 29 students added to that grade, added to that class last year, and now proposed another 12, you know, can change, change the look of things quite a bit.
Okay, you can take that into consideration. Alright, alright. Any other comments or discussion?
I just bring up one more thing. I just, real briefly, want to thank Dr. Holtz and of course Lynn for meeting with me last Wednesday, just to kind of get the discussion going on this. I just ask that admin, please continue to involve the teachers and work with the teachers as we move forward on, you know, improving the class sizes throughout the district. You know, just realize it's more than just a number. You also have to consider our population of students and what we serve. So, maybe one thing that I'll suggest that maybe you can research is, how is our population of students changing over the past couple of years? Like, like, is a special ed, you know, is that enrollment going up? You know, take a look at, you know, other factors, like, you know, 504s, things like that, because, you know, that all plays a factor, too, into how these classes are, are made up.
And not even just children that have special needs or have a, a plan in place. We've, we've certainly had years where, and your current year actually is, is one of them, where, where there's many children with significant behavioral needs who don't qualify for any kind of special services. And that, you're, you're not getting the, the extra help in the classroom or, or for those, those children because they don't necessarily qualify for a special service. And yet, it takes a lot of extra effort and time and resources within, within a grade level, say, to, to address those needs as best we can. It's certainly something that we care about, but like Mike said, is, is our population changing? It's the ebb and flow, certainly. I think a move towards setting a, a bit of a lower limit. But then again, also in elementary school, being divided between two buildings, and what you're finding right now, even in first grade, is sometimes you'll have in one building, maybe overall, the numbers are at a certain level. But there have been years, for instance, last year, Hills Corners, fifth grade, not to keep bringing up fifth grades, I happen to be there, but we were at 27, 28, now we're going in, in the year of 29. We had a class of 29 students, and in that particular group, the numbers at Edgerton were significantly lower. But now, we've got a sort of a bit of a flip-flop in first grade. So, the balance in those numbers between the buildings, too, I don't know how you would trust that. I honestly don't, but it, it can be, it can be significant, the differences, just with the, you know, five more children in a, times four.
And then you get around to what Margaret says, you know, fifth grade going into sixth grade, keep in mind that you have seven sections of fifth grade between the two buildings. That feeds into seven sections that you have here in your numbers, but keep in mind, those seven sections are taught by six teachers also. So, we're all teaching an extra class on top of that.
You know, and again, I know we're, we're winding this down, but Margaret, I was just thinking, too, it's the broad spectrum of students, and it's, it's, it's the students that might even need a little bit more attention because they're showing a particular strong talent in one area, too, that you'd like to be able to instruct them as much as you would the rest of the students as well, and finding that balance, and that's another different set of resources that needs to be allocated to that particular student. And with the GNT program and the advanced learning program undergoing some changes as well, in how that's instruction is delivered to those children, finding that balance in a larger class size is, I can appreciate the challenge.
Well, I sure appreciate all of you coming. On behalf of the board, I want to thank you for taking the time, because what you do is important to us. You, and I know you understand our challenge of trying to balance both the budget and the numbers through open enrollment so that we can continue to fund the level of staffing that we want. But I'm also going to encourage Dr. Holtz to keep doing what we've been doing in addressing those needs when it, because even without open enrollment, you're going to run into these weird class size things that happen. People move in, people move out, that just always happens. And as long as our administrative team continues to respond to your needs and provide resources, we should be okay. And I'm grateful that you're starting to look at lowering the numbers, particularly this year. You guys do a great job, and that's why people want to come here. So, you know, that's a, that's a plus side of this whole thing.
We're looking for the points, too, so we want to get the teachers here.
We do. So, I want to thank you all for coming, and I think this will come back. He's going to work it back through with the administrative team. I'm sure they'll all be talking about what you said tonight as well. But ultimately, we're all here to do what's best for our students, and if it starts to impact those kids in the classroom, we need to take a look at that. So, thank you very much.
So, what's the next step we're in? Is this coming back in two weeks?
In two weeks, right. But there will be discussions with the administrative team.
And if we can get teachers in on those discussions, too, that would be great, because we know our classroom is the best.
I think that conversation is good. So, alright, thank you very much. Then we'll move on to our next item of business. A, Quinn has been busy, first reading of revised policy, which was interesting timing of open enrollment. It's hard to memorize all these policies, but, policy 425, public school open enrollment. Changes in this were regarding the 220 program, correct? So, you had to make these changes. Does anyone have any questions about any of these? This is our first reading, and if this all looks good, then it will come back. Oh, no, I got to go back. Any questions about this policy? If not, then we will move to policy 462, first reading of revised policy 462, Wisconsin Technical Excellence Scholarship. Again, that was just one sentence that needed to be eliminated.
Yep.
And, thank you.
We also wanted to review this because it's going to be a permanent thing, and the, the state allowed us to put it out the first year and then kind of tweak it as we, if we see anything, and we didn't really see anything that needed to be tweaked.
Okay, good job, then. Seeing no comments, we'll bring that one back then for a vote at the next meeting. We've, first reading of revised policy 363.4, Wisconsin, or school district websites, some minor changes in there. Anyone have questions about that? Thank you, David. Seeing none, then that one will come back as well. How about first reading of revised policy 821, news media relations? We've certainly seen an uptick in our communication, which has been great. Can I get to that now? Anyone else have questions on 821? Seeing none, we'll move right to the first reading of policy 822.1, the district newsletter. Anyone have questions on that? Well, seeing none, then all of these policies will come back to the board, all of these, at the next meeting for a vote. And if you guys see anything between now and then, let us know, we'll take it up then. Okay, next up, we have item G, discuss and take possible action on WASB 2015 resolutions. And you've all had a chance to look those over, some interesting things in there, as always. Does anyone have, how this will work is Kevin will represent us at the convention. If not, he's going to let me know, we may need to substitute that out. Does anyone have any questions or any concerns or particular questions on resolutions? I know we typically.
I did, but I can't find it now.
We typically, it's way at the end, very last thing. It's going to be after the open enrollment report.
Just looking for the specific resolution you got a question on?
Right.
Yeah, but I don't think I'm going to find it. I read them the other night, and.
There's a number.
There was one I was against, but if it comes to me, I'll let you know.
Alright, sounds good.
And otherwise, we let Kevin pretty much speak for us at the convention.
Well, we usually make, we usually make a motion that he represents us and votes the way that he feels the best for the district.
So, we're looking to assign responsibility and empowerment to Kevin, Mr. Floyd, to act on. Mr. Floyd, to act on behalf of the witness.
Would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
I will make that motion.
Okay, it's been moved.
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, can we have discussion?
What, yes? Sorry, backing up a little bit.
Are, are you gonna be there?
I have to look at the date, otherwise, contact the end, we have to make another motion.
I told him to let me know.
Because I have to look back at the schedule.
Well, this would be giving him the power, not you or anybody else, right?
Yeah, so you need to probably discontinue.
Okay, do you want, and let me.
Power to the people, baby.
Redo that, then, and say, oh, gosh.
To a board member.
To assign responsibility and empowerment to act on behalf, to.
To the witness.
A witness, school board member representative? Okay. Can we modify that, and again, move that particular resolution?
I will move.
Move that one? We'll rescind the other one?
You can just amend it.
Or just amend it?
So Jonathan, you're okay with that amendment?
Amendment, friendly amendment, then it's, then we don't have to vote.
And I am okay with that.
You're okay with that? You're the seconder?
Yes.
Team effort up here. Thank you all. Do we need to revote, then? No, oh, we do, we need to revote, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, John, thank you. Opposed, seeing none. We move to comments from the school board regarding our items for future consideration. Does anyone have a future agenda item that they wish to approve? Seeing none, then we would move to board member announcements.
Could basketball win for our boys in Cudahy?
Oh, yeah.
Last Friday, had some fan issue, but other than that, it went pretty well.
Great. And does our clerk have an election report?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Two of our members, Ms. Byrd and Ms. Richter, were, did apply for reelection. There was no other people. And Ms. Byrd's name will go on the, on the ballot first. So, vote often, vote early, vote often.
Byrd is the word.
Bring your ID.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to adjourn to convening in closed session under Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five one C to discuss a review administrator retirement request.
So moved.
Seconded. We have to do real call vote, Stephanie?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes? John? John voted on this? Yes, okay.
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion carries. All right.